Mayor, you have a quorum.
Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with just one draw.
Mr. Mayor, you're kind of quiet. It's hard to hear you.
All right, is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just hold this here if it looks like I'm a little weird, that's what it is. In accordance with state statute, I've made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule an in-person city council meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is why this November 2nd, 2020, city council meeting is being held remotely. The first item on the agenda is a report of city officers and comments by mayor. I guess one quick comment about Halloween, despite all the ruminations about how it was going to be and risks and opportunities, I think it all went off beautifully. We had beautiful weather, people behaved themselves quite well, there were no reports of any issues that I got. And has, you know, once again, Lake Foresters were responsible, their kids had a great time. And speaking for, just for my neighborhood, this is the first time in many, many years that we've run out of candy. So I thought it was great and, you know, last year we had six inches of snow and I had to shovel the driveway so they could get up the driveway to get to the, to the front door this year. One interesting thing was because everybody had their goodies out on the, you know, walk or in the, on the table or whatever, you had, you had both parents out walking around in many cases, as opposed to one staying home and one out with the kids. And it made it all much more social, interesting, interesting social experience on the street. So it was, it was a lot of fun around here. So thanks to everybody for being cooperative and thoughtful and making it a great evening. In spite of the Michigan, Michigan State outcome, for the Michigan people anyway. That was a trick or treat for Michigan, I guess. For Ann Arbor, you know, I guess every once in a while they have to, they have to have their comeuppance, right? The first item on my agenda is a presentation by Sally Swarthout, Director of Parks and Recreation, to talk about the reimagined tree lighting ceremony. Sally?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, thank you for having me. I'm going to share my screen. I'm excited to bring forward a reimagined Lake Forest annual tree lighting celebration for 2020. After careful consideration and many conversations, the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation has delivered an alternative to the large gathering in Market Square. While the lights and tree, I'm sorry, I skipped a screen. While the lights and tree will go on in Market Square and the Central Business District for the season this year, we encourage our community to share in the joy of tree lighting on November 27th at 5:00 PM in their neighborhood parks. Trees and holiday decorations will be located in seven neighborhood parks, including West, South, Waveland, Townline, Northcroft, Everett, and Forest Park. And these lights will remain on for the entire holiday season. The foundation is looking for families to sponsor individual parks. And signage acknowledging the sponsors will be posted for the duration of the season. And information regarding sponsorship can be found at lfparksandrec.com on the foundation page. To ensure that our residents know of these changes, a marketing calendar has been developed and it includes this presentation to city council tonight. Tomorrow, we plan to issue a press release, post information on our websites, as well as launch a Facebook event. On November 10th, there will be a postcard mailed to every Lake Forest household. Constant contracts will go out to all of our emails on that date as well. On November 20th, this event will be released in the Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Program Guide, which is emailed as well as digital on our website. And it will also be presented to the mailboxes again via the dialogue. On November 23rd, we will push out a last constant contact and we will post on our social media pages for the last time as well. In a year of fast-moving changes to celebrations and tradition, the city looks forward to partnering with the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation to present the 2020 tree lighting ceremony in a new form. As of today, we are planning to move forward with this event, although it looks different from years past. All plans will be finalized over the coming weeks and adjusted if needed to comply with local and state guidance. For everyone's safety, we will request that you wear a mask and practice social distancing if you plan to attend. And that is our presentation tonight about our annual tree lighting.
Thank you, Sally. That sounds great. I think it's actually going to be fun to see more of the town lit up than it's ever been before. And hopefully the restrictions won't be extended to the point where we have to make, you know, radical changes to this new plan. But we've got three weeks to go and hopefully the numbers will cooperate. Any questions for Sally?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Jim Pruschlik. I have a comment. Hi Sally, thank you so much. I think this is great. Was there any thought about doing it at Elloa Park near, near the farm? And I'm sure Ara Gashkarin and I could help with some sponsorship if, if that node was able to be lit up as well for that neighborhood and for the northwest side of the west side, I'd be happy to sponsor that. And I'm sure Ara would. Just curious if that was considered.
That's wonderful, Jim. I think what we, the challenge with Elloa Park might have been the electrical, the ability to, to light that small pavilion with electrical. But I can certainly look into it. You know, our forestry department handles all the tree lighting issues and I'm sure they'll be happy to take a look and see if we can figure out some way to include Elloa in this, in this tradition or in this new, new, new look at tree lighting. Happy to do that.
Thanks, Laura.
Great suggestion. Any other comments, questions?
Sally, quick question. I'm on the Parks and Recreation website. Where, where did you say the sponsorship information is for the, the tree lighting parks? It will be launched tomorrow on the foundation page, which is actually the middle tab in the orange bar in the middle of the screen.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Sally. Looking forward to it.
Thank you all.
Now that we've, now that we've gotten through Halloween, this is the next big, next big thing.
And tree lighting.
I like to say that the day after Halloween is New Year's. So, you know, it all happens really fast from now on. The next item, and this is a little improv on my part, the next item, which is not on the agenda, is Mike Thomas has some news to present to us. And so I'll let you deliver all the thunder, Mike.
Well, great. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if you can hear me, here we are. Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yes, Friday evening, we received word from IDOT that in fact, we're going to have a pre-construction meeting this coming Friday for the Deer Path Route 41 project. In my world, I was blown away because it means it's actually going to happen. The pre-construction meeting really is the time when IDOT, a lot of city staff and the contractor get together and they really get into the dirty details. So although we don't have any of those for you right now, what we are understanding is that the contractor Burger Excavation Burger has been around for a long time. They're, they're an excellent company. They would like to start this month. And in doing so, one of the first things will be removal of all the trees and brush at Owani and Deer Path. And either at the same time or shortly thereafter, they will begin excavation of the two ponds. So there are deadlines in the IDOT contract, May 1st to have the two ponds excavated, the water main excavated, the pump house foundation excavated, and a wall put up on the west pond near 17 and 18. And then at that point, the intention is to turn it back to the city, the golf course, and let Chuck and the golf course crews and a contractor bring to life Deer Path Golf Course with these two new pond features. So we're very excited. In addition, last week, we, we received the signed intergovernmental agreement between IDOT and the city. So the city wants 80% of the work is completed on the golf course property. We, the city, can submit an invoice to IDOT for reimbursement of 80% of the $693,000, which again, will go pay for, which will pay for the improvements at the golf course. So all around, very exciting. We hope we receive good news Friday and I will get back with Jason and Jason will share with the city council the latest updated schedule. But the two-year project may begin very, very soon. With that, Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Couple of comments. This is, this is great news. A lot of it has to do with our resident, new resident and state Senator Julie Morrison, who I believe sits on the Transportation Committee, making an impassioned appeal to the President of IDOT to accelerate this project after we were told about six months ago that there was no funding for it and they didn't know when they were going to be funding for it. So now they've actually awarded the contract already. So this is, this is huge. And having said that, it's all happening so quickly, we need to get some communication out and make sure people know about it and, and that we have our traffic plans in place and so forth. So Mike, could you talk to that, talk to that issue a little bit?
Sure. Once we do receive a schedule, we will work with Susan Banks to get out to the public and yourselves, obviously, what that means. The way we have understood this project all along is that next summer, if things progress as they are supposed to, when school is let out mid-June through mid-August, for that, for that two-month period, Deer Path will probably go down to one lane. And that again is written in the contract, they'll need to put that storm sewer pipe under Deer Path from the pond at 1718 to the pump station at Owani and Deer Path. To do that, they're going to need to go down to one lane. Obviously, we will be working with police and fire as well. But we thought it was best to do it during those two months when school was out of session. Granted, there will be summer school, but we should typically see less traffic on Deer Path. But after that, those are, from what we have been told so far, those would be the only two months where Deer Path would be brought down to one lane. So we will absolutely, Mr. Mayor, communicate this in the many different ways we have here at the city to let people know that the project is coming and when in fact, we are going to inconvenience drivers on Deer Path, we will get notice out on that as well.
And maybe just to piggyback on that, I think in short order here, we can certainly blast out a message to the community directing them to the city's website where we'll not only provide anticipated timelines for the project, but maybe just a brief FAQ sheet as well, help them understand the scope of the work, you know, what they're going to see over the next almost two years and then what will result from the project upon completion. But no question, to your point, Mayor, perhaps as, as Director Thomas said, by the end of this month, there could be some activity, at least on the site, where the pump station itself is going to go and we want to make sure the community has received information from us before they see any activity occurring.
And, and drivers, there, there could be some delays as well as those semis are going to be going in and out of Deer Path Golf Course and out of Owani and Deer Path, I am sure there are going to be flaggers bringing those trucks in and out. So there, there could be some traffic slowdowns on Deer Path time to time. The other thing I wanted to, to let city council know about is ComEd has come to us to say they are interested in replacing the bridge that they own over Deer Path. And that is a bridge that has the bike path on it. ComEd actually owns it. So they've come to us and started having discussions with us, saying that they are looking at potentially replacing that next year. So they are in the very beginning stages of that, which we know wouldn't be the best time to do it. On the other hand, inconveniencing that area one time is probably a smart thing to do to get it done. But again, they're in the very, very beginning stages of talking about it and putting together some basic ideas for a design. They own it. They have obviously a right to replace that bridge if they see fit. And that, that is in the planning stages now.
Refresh my recollection, we've been in communication with the hospital on this, I'm assuming? And, and is there an alternate route for them that's being suggested or how are we handling the?
The alternate routes really are going to be Wesley and people obviously can come from the north at 176. But Wesley Road, once we bring Deer Path down, Wesley will be the alternate route. Again, we are going to be, and we, we've been talking to police and fire over the years as this project has, has progressed. And will now talk to them and define that, that final plan of, and find out exactly how they're going to handle calls on both sides of Route 41. But Police Chief and Fire Chief Waldorf and Seabert know about this and will be working with them once we receive the final schedule.
So, so for example, if I'm coming from the south, I'd be getting off at, how would I be getting to the hospital?
Depending upon if that, if that, if that access ramp is open, which most of the time it should be, you'll be, you should be able to get off at Deer Path. But otherwise, you would need to head west on 60 up to Waukegan and then head north on Waukegan. Assuming you're heading northbound, southbound, the same thing, southbound, you'll have to get off at 60. You could get off at Gauge if you wanted to, heading southbound. But probably the, the safest way I'd suggest is getting off at a stoplight intersection at Route 60.
So this is going to require a lot of signage on our part, I would imagine.
A lot of signage on the state's part, yes. They, Burger Excavation, they will handle all of the signage 100%. The state will have a resident engineer on site, they'll have a construction supervisor on site. We will have one of our engineering assistants as well. But the bottom line is any and all aspects on the construction of this project, on detours, on signage, anything having to do with construction on site, 100% IDOT. Our job is to convey that to yourselves and to the residents so you know any potential inconveniences that may come upon us, number one. But number two, obviously, we're going to inspect the project as well because in the end, we will be receiving the keys. It will be 100% city-owned and ours to maintain and replace in the far, far future.
Well, I just have one other point that I'd just like to raise. You and I had a little conversation about a week ago about the runoff water. And I think that it might be a good idea if we're doing some press releases and some things on constant contact, we might talk about that I think this, this enhances in many ways, some sustainability elements as to how that stormwater runoff is being handled. And now that you and I agreed as to where it's going. You know, because I think sometimes we don't, yeah.
Did you insist that it be changed?
Where it's going?
Yeah.
No, we just had to. It's an inside joke. It's an inside joke. It'll wind up in the, in, you know, going down the Mississippi is where it's going, not into the lake. That was what we had to sort of come to a conclusion on. So, you know, because sometimes, we've talked about this, that there's a lot going on in the city that incorporates sustainable elements and we should highlight those. So I just, I think this is an opportunity to do that and I hope we do.
Okay, very good.
Not sustainable piling up under the biaduct. That's, that's definitely not ecological appropriate.
That's right. That's right.
Any other questions for Mike? Obviously, there's going to be a lot more detail to come on this. This was, we sort of heard that this might be happening, but it's happening a lot faster and, which is wonderful. But, you know, we're, there's still a lot of details to be covered.
Yes.
More questions?
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mayor, I think you're muted.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you very much, Mike. Thanks again to Julie Morrison for moving this along when it appeared to be stalled. Next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager. Jason, anything?
Thanks. I, I actually, I have no comments or report tonight. So I'll do my part to help keep the meeting moving along.
Okay, great. Next item is opportunity for citizens to address the city council. There is a phone number that you can call, 847-810-3643. And for the first time tonight, we also have the, there's a Q and A button that people can push. Something just happened on my screen where I don't see it anymore, but we'll wait a second for for notification that there may or may not be any public comments. 847-810-3643.
Mr. Mayor, there are no callers at this time.
Okay. And thus far, the Q and A light hasn't lit, so we'll move on to committee reports. We have a committee report from the finance committee. We have the determination of non-binding estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated from property taxes for the 2020 calendar year in accordance with the Truth in Taxation Statute, an establishment of a public hearing date for the 2020 tax levy, if required. That's going to be presented by Elizabeth Hollob, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The action requested of the city council this evening is to approve a non-binding estimate of the 2020 property tax levy for the city. The numbers presented in your packet this evening correspond with the numbers you saw on your October 19th Finance Committee agenda. The summaries are split in aggregate levy and debt service levy and your write-up to meet specific requirements of the Truth in Taxation Statute. So as we discussed October 19th, the council is required under statute to approve a non-binding estimate at least 20 days before considering the tax levy. And so we have this item on the agenda this evening for your consideration.
George, we can't hear you.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Okay, then I would entertain a motion or a resolution for determination of a non-binding estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated from property taxes for the 2020 calendar year, an establishment of December 7th, 2020, as a public hearing date, if required, in accordance with the Truth in Taxation Statute. Second, okay. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes. Alderman Pruschlik.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarin.
Hi.
Alderman Pushman.
Hi.
And Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is a committee report from our audit committee and presentation of the fiscal year 2020 comprehensive annual financial report. This is going to be presented by Vincent Sparrow, Audit Committee Chairman. Vince, would you like to?
You can, you can hear me, but probably can't see me yet.
Correct.
Somebody has, I'm getting a message, I can't, the host has asked me to, okay, never mind. There we go.
There you are.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Alderman and members of the city staff for having me here today. The Audit Committee has seven members, in addition to myself, William McFadden, Ty Magnuson, Mark Dillon, Tara Jones, the mayor and Alderman Morris also serve ex officio. The committee also lost a member this year, Bill Smith, who served on the Audit Committee from December of '27 through his passing in March of 2020. We want to make note of that. In calendar 2020, the committee conducted four meetings, one each in January, April, July, and October. In continuing the city's, city council's charge, we reviewed the financial statements of the foundations associated with the city. The city has reviewed in 2020 the financial statements of the Senior Foundation, Coria Foundation, Please Foundation, Parks and Recs Foundation, Ragdale Foundation, and Gordon Community Center. We also have established a standard calendar to ensure that these reviews are conducted annually. At its October 15th meeting, the committee received a summary of the city's fiscal 2020 comprehensive annual financial report, including the auditor's communications. The city's independent audit firm, Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus, reported no findings as part of its financial audit. The city, I should note, the city also received from the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFPA, the award for certificate of achievement for excellence in finance reporting for the 43rd, 41st consecutive year for the first, for the fiscal year ending 2019. And the city will be submitting the finance report for 2020 for consideration. I think that's a frankly, a remarkable achievement. And my personal view is the, the document, while it's certainly is long, is comprehensive, it's extremely well laid out and very well-written and a great source of information about the city. With respect to the audit report or the, the CAFR and the audit summary, the fiscal year 20 audit opinion is unmodified or clean. There was no management letter, which, so there was no reporting of any significant deficiencies, material control weaknesses. The city has not received a management letter for the last six years. Again, a remarkable accomplishment. The government-wide financial statements start on page 17 of the document. They are reported on the accrual basis of accounting, which is appropriate. And one of the results is the net position of the city decreased by 2.3 million in this year, largely due to the cancellation of spring events due to COVID-19. There are, of course, a number of documents and funds and different ways of looking at the city's operations in the, in the document. If there's any questions, I know that both Elizabeth and Diana are on who can ask those questions. But, but the document does include not only the overall comprehensive view of the city, but also looks at individual fund financial statements, which are recorded in some cases on the modified basis of accounting, modified accrual basis. Budgetary schedules start on page 90 of the document. The general fund, fund balance increased by 700,000 net of, including transfers and revenues for over budget. The management discussion and analysis, which starts on page four, and the transmetal letter, which is in the introductory section, provide an excellent overview by city staff of the annual financial report. It's actually, you know, I should confess, being an accountant, I really like reading the document because it is so informative and, and well-laid out. You, you do really kind of need to like numbers, but it's, it's certainly a treasure trove of great information. Are there any questions for, for me at this one?
This is Chad Morris. I don't have any questions, but Vince, I want to thank you because you and your committee have done an excellent job. We have a tremendous auditor, Baker Tilly, did a super job. But thank goodness that we have residents who are able and willing to take this job on and to do the monitoring that's required by the Audit Committee. So thank you very much. And I want to just comment too on the breadth and depth of the financial report that you mentioned. The finance team has put an amazing report together and I don't know if you really, all of the council members have been able to dig through it, but it's a huge amount of information that they've been able to. but it's a huge amount of information that they've been able to assemble for our benefit and for the community's benefit. So hats off to them. But Vince, thank you and your committee for all the good work you do.
You're welcome.
Just to add, if I may, I do appreciate all the information you've provided, the quality of the work. And Alderman Morris has been helpful to me to understand a few things. The one question I had is, we talk about the Baker Tilly opinion letter as being unmodified. I was familiar with the word unqualified being the opinion letter you'd like to get from your independent auditors. Is there a difference between the two, unmodified and unqualified?
There isn't. The phrase is really, it's a clean opinion. So in their opinion, the financial statements represent fairly the financial position, results of operations and cash flows of the city and all of its funds.
Very, thank you.
Welcome.
And again, congratulations on getting that report.
Honestly, you don't need to congratulate me. The city has a fantastic financial staff, led by Elizabeth DeCoursey and with Diane. And we always get very, very favorable comments from the auditors as to how well-prepared the team is and the thoroughness of the work that they've done. So we just.
By the awards they do receive.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Other comments? I have a couple of comments echoing some of the things that have already been said. The Audit Committee does a wonderful job in the background. It's not something people think about very often. But for example, they review in some detail the financial reports of all of the, and Vince mentioned this, all of the foundations, which is, in the past, I can tell you, having sat on the Audit Committee for a long time as Finance Chair and now as Mayor, the, they weren't always so great. And they've gotten a lot better. And, and a lot of that is the work of the Audit Committee in helping these foundations, many of which are not, you know, they don't have the resources that the city has to improve their financial reporting and their financial controls and so forth. And so I think they've done a great service to the city. And one of the things I learned along the way, which surprised me, but it's quite true, it's quite unusual to have an Audit Committee. Cities, municipalities in this state don't have Audit Committees generally. And it's another example of Lake Forest being more transparent, more thorough, more professionally run than, than is the norm. And, and as Alderman Morris said, it's wonderful that we have this treasure, this talent pool to draw from of people that are willing to donate their time, like Vince and the rest of the Audit Committee. They're all highly qualified and do a great job for the city. So thank you very much, Vince, for another great, great job. And if you are looking for something to help you get to sleep at night, the CAFR is a great thing to use. It's actually a very easy-to-use reference document. If you ever want to know a number or how much, what percentage of our income comes from sales tax? I did this one time. I wanted to know how much money Matawa was getting from Costco. And it's very easy to figure out from their CAFR. So, and that's on their website and it's openly available. Anytime you ever have anything like that with a municipality or a question, it's always there. So. So if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to receive the audit report for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
All vote?
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlag.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber. Eight yay, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Biddy. Next is items for omnibus vote consideration. I have nine of them tonight, but they're short. The first is approval of the extension of the mayor's declaration of a local state of emergency until the next city council meeting. The second is approval of the October 19th, 2020 city council meeting minutes. Three is approval of the check register for the period September 26th to October 23rd, 2020. Four is approval of the fourth and fifth year of the contract with American Printing Technologies for Vehicle, Pet, and Parking Licenses, Permits Services. Fifth is approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Lake Forest and Lake County and the Lake County 211 program to enhance information resources in the event of a natural disaster. Six is award of a contract with advanced tree care for an amount not to exceed $42,000 as part of the MPI Tree Pruning Services joint bid for fiscal year 2021. Seventh is approval to purchase a pro-wall outdoor ice rink system for West Park in the amount of $49,810. Eighth is consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. And ninth is consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Are there any items here that any member of the council would like to see removed or taken separately? Or if there are any questions? There being none, I would entertain a motion to approve the nine omnibus items as presented.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlag.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
And Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Eight yay, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. The next item on our agenda is additional items for discussion and comments by council members. Are there any council members that would like to say anything? Okay, there being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed?
George.
Is that an opposition vote? The meeting is adjourned.
Bye.
Bye, everyone. Bye-bye.
Bye.